And good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, our wonderful guests today. I will call to order this hybrid public meeting of the Clark County Commission on Aging. It is October 19th, 2022, and I am Cass Friedland, the Chair of the Commission. Due to COVID-19, meetings of the Clark County Commission on Aging are being held in a hybrid meeting room. This means Commission members, guests, and members of the public have the option to attend in person or remotely. For members of the public attending remotely, you can join the event as an attendee, meaning that other event participants cannot see or hear you unless you are acknowledged by the Commission Chair or staff, and your audio is muted. You should be able to see the agenda items on your screen. I will be announcing the agenda items as we move through the meeting topics, in case you do not have the agenda in front of you. There'll be two opportunities for public comment during today's meeting. The first opportunity will be during the moderated fireside chat discussion, and the second opportunity will be a general public comment period for any comments not related to our presentation this afternoon evening. Before we get two opportunities for you to provide comment, we'll provide a short announcement of how that works and how you can join. So this evening's agenda is planned as follows: the approval of the agenda, approval of meeting notes from September 21st, approval of Community in Motion grant application request, moderated discussion with technology innovative communication providers, a general public comment, and then communications and announcements. The first order of business will be to start with a roll call of Commission members who are present at this meeting. Commission members, please say "I'm here" when I call your name, and as a reminder to all of us, please don't forget to mute yourself when not speaking. Sue Cameron? I believe that Sue is absent. Chuck Green?
I am here.
Amy Gross?
I'm here.
Franklin Johnson?
I'm here.
Megan McCarthy?
I'm here.
Mel Sanchez?
I am here.
Tanya Stewart?
I'm here.
And Cass Friedland? I am here, most certainly. So, yes. Oh, Larry? How did I miss you, Larry Smith? Larry, how terrible. Hi, Larry.
I'm here.
You're here.
I'm here.
Thank you, Larry. I am so sorry. Please forgive me on that. So we have eight of our nine members that are able to join us today, so that leaves us with a quorum of five or more. So we do have a quorum. Again, apologies to you, Larry. Now I'd like to open up the agenda to see if there are any changes. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? I don't think I see any hands. If not, may I entertain a motion for approval of today's meeting agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded to approve today's agenda. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor, please unmute and say aye.
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 All those opposed or any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to meeting notes. We've all had a chance to review the notes from our September 21st meeting. Any requests for changes? Well, if not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of September 21st meeting notes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the September 21st, 2022 meeting notes. Is there any further discussion? And with no further discussion, all those in favor, please unmute and say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or any abstentions? Thank you so much. The motion passes unanimously. So we're going to move on to the approval of the Community in Motion grant application request. Just to give a little background, we received a request from Community in Motion for the Commission to submit a letter of support for Washington State Department of Transportation consolidated grant application that would support coordination of transportation solutions, focus on rural areas by providing access to vital medical appointments and social activities, increase access for individuals not eligible for Medicaid transportation, and enable local populations to safely age in place. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve our Community in Motion request.
Chair, I'd like to have a discussion intro and maybe propose a modified motion based on our work session discussion.
Certainly. So we will entertain now discussion?
Yes, so I went back and I looked at the letter, the email I got from, it sounds like there's somebody unmuted in the conference room there. I got a request from Serena, from the hatch, from the Community in Motion to provide a support. It was addressed to me as a member of the ATCI, and I in turn elevated this to the Chair for consideration by the full Commission. As we've discovered during the work session, we actually have a policy and a procedure on requests such as this that are entertained by the full Commission, and unfortunately, this was not a timely, you know, didn't give us enough time to go through our procedures. So what I'd like to do is this. I would like maybe head nods, I don't know if you want to put it in the form of an official motion, for me as a member of the ATCI and just happen to be liaison of the Commission on Aging to submit a personal letter of support to the grant for Community in Motion this year, but also let them know of our formal procedures for next year for that consideration for the full Commission. As part of this action, I'm not sure if this is a motion or just thinking out loud and making a motion, is to create a subcommittee to relook at this, these procedures and policies because I think they haven't been dusted off in quite a while, and maybe as far as when it comes to grants, some of the deadlines and some of the processes maybe need to be a little bit more tightened up. But, so the motion would be this, for the Commission to approve me writing a letter on my behalf as member of the ATCI and a liaison from the Commission on Aging in support of their grant application, and in turn, we form a subcommittee to relook at our procedures and return to the Commission hopefully next month with a revision that we could be considered and let others, let our partners know that in the future, this is the policy, the procedure that we would like to honor and respect as we move forward in entertaining these requests in the future.
So we have, so Chuck, you'll help me with this, as this is my first time with this portion of it. So we're going to have a motion that you, as a representative from the Commission, but are on the Transportation Committee, that you will be writing a personal letter for them, but that we will then also set up a subcommittee or as a group, we will revisit our policy and procedures and see if in fact, these are something that need to be revised. Is that correct?
Yes, you said it aloud.
Yeah, you said it aloud.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion for what I just said, for Chuck to be writing a personal letter as a representative from the Commission, but in his capacity as a transportation guru, and that we also then include our revision or thinking about revisiting our policies and procedures around letters of support.
So moved and all that. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve all that I just said. Is there any further discussion? Okay, with, did I miss any hands up? By any chance, anyone? No. The scrolling is awkward. Okay, so with no further discussion, so with no further discussion, all those in favor of all that we just said, please unmute and say aye.
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 All opposed or any abstentions? Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, Chuck. So the motion to have you write a letter as a representative of the Commission, but a personal letter for you, and that we set up a group to revisit our policies and procedures around letting, writing has passed. So thank you so much for that conversation.
Just a clarification, that would not be a letter on Commission on Aging letterhead. It would be my personal letter with that kind of title representative. And then I believe we also would need to have some action to appoint the subcommittee.
Yeah, thank you, Chuck. I think that's a really elegant solution, given that we've just all discovered this policy and that we've all been involved with grants and know that we do have to really, really think about that and have some actionable components to it. So we will, that's something that we will then discuss. Do we want to, do we need to, Janet and Susan, pull that committee together right now, the subcommittee together, or is that something we can just send out an email and see who wants to be involved?
Yeah, we think you could send out an email and request volunteers.
I want to volunteer.
Amy, was that you who just submitted?
That was me. That was Amy.
And Tanya's raising her hand as well. And Tanya, okay. Thank you. Well, let's move on to our, thank you, everyone, by the way. Thank you for that. Our next agenda item, which will be a moderated discussion, or as we call them fireside chats, continuing our exploration of this year's theme, Innovation Through Connection. And this evening, our Commission member, Tanya Stewart, hello, Tanya, will moderate a discussion with our guests, all of whom will share the ways in which they help create an interconnected world. I give the floor to Tanya.
Thank you so much, Cass, and I'm very excited to moderate today's conversation. So as Cass mentioned at the beginning of our conversation here, our focus this year has been on Innovation Through Connection. Our focus tonight is a subset of support, technology, innovation, and communication with providers. So I wanted to open up with a few terms, just so that we're all a bit leveled on terminology, and I'm gonna, I might actually get corrected by our experts tonight, so I look forward to maybe that happening. But some fun terms to start with, I'd like to review the Internet of Things and the Connected Age. So both of these concepts describe a world that's made up of connections between everything and everyone. The Internet of Things focuses on connections between physical objects, like our smartphones, like our smartwatches in our homes, whereas the Connected Age refers to virtual connections, those between people, resources, or different ideas. Think Instagram or Facebook on that, or even texting your friends. These types of interconnectivity between people and things are related to the concept of connected health. This model of health has the patient at the center and the goal of achieving proactive and efficient healthcare with the help of that interconnectivity. So let's take a moment now just to define that connected health a little tiny bit more. Caulfield and Donnelly define connected health as a conceptual model for health management where devices, services, interventions are designed around a patient's need, and health-related data is shared in such a way that the patient can receive care in the most proactive and efficient manner as possible. Today's conversation is going to hone in on innovations through connection within this digital technology space with specific attention to healthcare. And we are so darn honored to have two remarkable entrepreneurs for our fireside chat. Well, now, excuse me, three, we've added Linda. So we have Stephen Farber, co-founder of Health Hive, we have Ali Amadi, you're gonna help me if I mispronounce that, Ali, with TriCare, and with Ali tonight is Linda Miller. So first, I'm gonna offer a little bit of background on each one of these individuals, and Linda, I'm gonna ask that you offer a quick background on yourself when I'm done introducing Stephen and Ali. So Stephen Farber, as I mentioned, co-founder and CEO of Health Hive. Stephen left his investment banking career as the global co-head of project finance advisory at Barclays Capital when his mother developed pancreatic cancer. His experience as a caregiver refocused his professional goals on solving problems he encountered within the healthcare system, and man, do we have a lot of those problems, right? Stephen started by founding and building Ultraling, a cloud-based clinical workflow solution. After selling this company, Stephen and his core team took that experience and passion and refocused on solving the problems they saw in care management of loved ones. Health Hive, his newest company, has two primary goals with many implications. Goal number one is helping the individual, family, and informal care team better, to help better manage the caregiving process. And the second is providing a platform to allow the patient, family, and broad care team to work cooperatively across organizations, ensuring that providers have the opportunity to better understand the individual's clinical and social needs and preferences. So that's Stephen, and we're gonna get to you, Stephen, in a moment. Your first question's gonna go to you. Our second guest is Ali Amadi. He is a three-time venture-backed tech star veteran with over $20 million raised in institutional capital. He has extensive experience in software as a service, also known as SaaS, as well as value-based care, business models, and has a proven track record in establishing strategic partnerships across vertical, horizontal integrations. And these are health plans and health systems and companies like Microsoft and Northwest Mutual. He has over 18 years of business development experience in various industries, including power, energy, aerospace, military, and government. So he is here today as the CEO of his company that he founded at T Care. T Care enables family caregivers to focus on what matters most, taking care of themselves and their loved ones. T Care has been working with Washington State Department of Health, the Social and Health Services, DSHS, since 2010. We found this out when we were chatting with Ali on our prep call, and this has been by supporting informal caregivers across the state of Washington. After Washington concluded that caregivers enrolled in T Care showed 20% reduction in long-term care services after about a 21-month average, this was a 21-month average delay in the nursing home placement. T Care became the legislatively mandated protocol to use with the informal caregivers of Washington State's Medicaid program. T Care has been used for 15 years, has used the 15 years of longitudinal data from Washington State to strengthen the model. So Washington, we've got something to be proud of. The model now is used by over 120 area agencies on aging and has helped formulate the strategy of over 200 Commissions on Aging in the last eight years at the federal, state, and county levels. So we are very thrilled to have you all here, and I'm gonna give a pause here. Linda, would you mind offering a quick introduction of yourself?
Sure. So my name is Linda Miller, and I'm the VP of Government Programs at T Care. I bring about 20 years' experience working directly with family caregiver programs, building those community-based organization programs out at the area agencies on aging, as well as working with OU Department of Geriatric Medicine on their evidence-based programming for healthy aging initiatives. And so I'm on board here to help build those partnerships.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And by the way, all those 120 area agencies on aging and 200 county commissions on aging that you mentioned, that's all Linda, not me.
Hey, y'all, we got the right people on the call today. Very, very exciting. Well, first, we're gonna go to Stephen. Stephen, you offered really the inspiration you shared with me earlier about getting into healthcare because of your mother's illness. I wonder if, is there anything else that you want to share behind your company's origin? The problems you're trying to solve, go into a little more detail. And Ali and Linda, I'm gonna ask you the same question, so a little more, we want to get to know you at a personal level and make that connection. So those experiences that led to the build of your organization?
And I think one of the things you'll find from me is there's an awful lot I don't know yet. Ali and Linda have lots of data and lots of answers. I have lots of things I'm trying to solve and still figuring out. So, you know, as you mentioned, Tanya, you know, my mother had pancreatic cancer, that's what brought me into health tech, like so many other people that are involved. I've got five doctors in the family, and then went through the care process with a family member with congestive heart failure and another one with dementia. And what became absolutely clear each time is even with every advantage in the world, this process has just got awful. And much to the chagrin of my wife, I then said, even though I sold my last company, I'm gonna start another one and try to figure this one out, and this is a pretty big problem. And from our perspective, what we're trying to do is say, how do you take the individual, allow them to maintain dignity and control, bring in their formal and informal care team and family, but still have a business model that makes sense? So where's your revenue gonna come from? How do you solve problems in what is a totally disconnected world where, you know, there's just no alignment in terms of interests? And that's really what started this off, and we can get into later on, you know, what we're doing and how we're thinking about it, but it's tough.
Yep. Awesome. And Stephen, just for the team's real clarity, your company has just gotten started, right? We're only the first couple of years in.
Yes, we are now in year four, but it's really, we're just going commercial. Lots of this time has been spent just talking to everybody in the world that I can talk to to figure out problems, make sure we're understanding the market, where the gaps are, and then figure out what is really the difficult part, which is how do you get the health system involved in all of this, because ultimately, it has to be the payers and the at-risk parties that are paying for this. So we've made a lot of progress, but we have a long way to go.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Ali, Linda, on your side, your personal story, a little more of the personal side to the origin of T Care.
Sure. My background, I'm a U.S. Naval Aviator. Academically, I'm an aerospace engineer and flew different aircraft systems in the military. And I left the service and became a nuclear engineer for Siemens and was traveling the world, doing consulting work at different nuclear power plants. My wife and I in 2016 became caregivers to my mother-in-law that was, at the time, diagnosed with stage IV lymphoma cancer. And I was introduced to a university research team at University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee, that had developed this clinical model known as what we call the identity discrepancy theory. This is the transition of identity from a son, daughter, or spouse role into a family caregiver role, whereas in early stages of caregiving, I'm 90% son, 10% caregiver. Towards later stages, I become 90% caregiver, 10% son. In this different stages, there's different risk factors to burnout. This clinical model that was created at the university, I was amazed on how much it helped my wife and I cope and come to terms with the caregiving journey that we were going through. And I decided, I was amazed why this was sitting on the shelf at the university. And at the time, they had actually partnered up with Washington State Department of Social Health Services and had gone through six years of pilot implementation rollout and had this longitudinal data sitting on the shelf at the university. Anyway, long story short, pulled this out of the university, started productizing this as a software technology protocol and putting it in the hands of the masses. So, you know, we started, we started T Care seven years ago, and we're a seven-year-old company based out of St. Louis, Missouri. Washington State, at the state level, being our largest customer and our longest-lasting customer, we're now legislatively mandated statewide in Washington in the Medicaid program. And in St. Louis, Missouri, we're a team of 160 employees. Linda was team number three. So Linda's been with us, she's a founding member of the company, so.
So I came to T Care for two reasons. Number one, because of my work that I did one-on-one in the community with the caregivers and the struggles that I saw them do, but also from a professional standpoint of having to help and support those caregivers and just somewhat filling in app with some of the assessments and some of the tools that I had to try to help them and help them understand what their journey was, but also because of my own journey with my dad. He had pulmonary fibrosis, and here I was running a successful caregiver program that was award-winning, going through my journey, thinking I had my stuff all together, and I was floundering. And little did I know that something like this would help me understand where I was floundering and why I was overwhelmed and really kind of put it in my face, and so that's why I'm here to really help build those community-based organizations, put these things in their hands so that they can better support caregivers and then help people like me on that end of the journey when we think we've got it all together and we really don't.
It's amazing when we pause and we ask the question, how many of us have had emotionally challenging moments in the healthcare space? I bet you there's not one person here tonight or that would listen to this recording that would not raise their hand if asked that question. And that is, so thank you, thank you both, thank you all for sharing, all three of you for sharing your journeys, and I'm grateful for the passion, because you will be the ones transforming our healthcare system. Ali, I want to go back to you and to Linda a little bit more around how does that, how does T Care integrate within the counties and municipalities? But we can, let's just hone in on Washington State. I think I threw out across the country, but let's just like hone in. What are the mechanisms? What's the way in which T Care actually expresses itself in supporting the caregiver? I don't feel like I own that yet, if that makes sense.
So, Tanya, if you allow me to share my screen, I could start looking, I can start sharing some things. Ultimately, you know, if you ask any family member what help they need with the care to their loved one, the typical answer that they know what to ask for is home care or respite services. This is what caregivers are kind of conditioned, or they think they can, they know that's what they need, because that's what the industry has been saying they need. But, you know, when my wife and I went through the, our caregiving journey, what we thought we needed in our caregiving journey at the time was also what we thought was, we need home care support. But when we went through the T Care algorithms and the caregiver support mechanism and the clinical model, what the system identified what we needed was marriage counseling. Because our risk factor to burnout was not necessarily the cooking and cleaning that I had to do with my mother-in-law, not the physical conditions, not the, you know, the chores or the errands. It was the toll that caregiving was taking on our marriage. And that's what led us to start thinking about, we need to place her in a nursing home or assisted living or independent living because, or a memory care facility. because, or memory care facility. Because that's what we were told or what we thought we needed. Right? But caregiving is a lot more challenging than that. And when we look at how family members cope with caregiving, there's two things that really, really are the leading indicators of facility placement. One, it's the ability to continue care. And two, it's the willingness to continue care at home. So everybody talks about aging in place. There's, as you said, the IoT devices, the Internet of Things devices, there's the sensory, there's all this. But really, it comes down to the psychological conditions of that family member that is primarily in charge of mom's needs. If they don't have the ability or the willingness, nothing else matters. You could throw 200 sensors at the home, or, you know, all this transportation, all this respite care. Ultimately, that family member is going to burn out and, and place them in a, in a area. So, that said, you know, we, we always continue talking about this. But, you know, none of these areas really matter. And, and so we, we, we talk about different areas of caregiving. And Linda has been in, in, in charge of talking about different mechanisms as well. But really, what we see the caregiver is, that primary family care. And when we say caregiver, we're not talking about the home care or what's known as formal caregiver. We're talking about the son, the daughter, the neighbor, that is the primary decision-maker on all of families' needs. That's what we bring to the table, the willingness and ability to continue care.
So as you pull up your screen, this is a little bit off of what we normally do. And we had a pretty intense conversation about fireside chats, a conversation. And in, in the middle of preparing for the rest of the commission here, Ali pulled up some data. And I was like, are you kidding me? Like, I could not believe what I was seeing on the screen. And I thought this would be pretty special to have the other commission members see, just on the power of digging in, understanding people, but pairing up the care of the people with the data to help, to drive better interventions, better approaches, better level of support. Ali, if you're, if you're still working on sharing your screen, we can come back to you because I'd like to continue the conversation.
Please come back.
And then if Jenna or Susan, if you can support Ali in the background, that would be great. So Stephen, I want to jump over to you and just get into a little more detail with Health Hive. So Health Hive is currently launching patient-family health information access in the nursing home. I believe that from the last conversation we had, that's where we were. I'm hoping that you can give us kind of a long-term vision of that patient-community connectivity, but also I just, maybe even a better foundation. I want to make sure everyone understands the foundation of what you're doing.
Great. And it, and it's interesting, before, you know, a year ago, I didn't know about Ali or T Care. Just in full disclosure, we actually are working on a relationship right now because some of his data is so valuable. And, you know, where I started was the problem that I want to solve is for the family in formal and informal caregiving. So principally informal, but really, how does everybody involved in the care of a person get, see the same information, have access to resources that they need, those sorts of things? So that's the hive that's owned and controlled by the individual. In order to make that valuable, we have to tie in lots of data and information into the hive. So it's tying into health systems and, you know, resources, doing all sorts of things. And that's really the goal, is to say, how can we make life better for the family, for the caregivers, so that, to Ali's point, they don't burn out, they're more engaged? That brings value back to the health system. So longitudinally, we're bringing down the cost of care because we're keeping people out of hospitals or skilled nursing, whatever other environments. But also, we're just giving people a better quality of life because people understand what that individual wants. So that's really the long-term goal. The vision for what we're building is so big and so hard that you have to start somewhere. So the place we started was in a place that everybody else hates, which is always a great place to start a business. And that is this transition from a skilled nursing facility to home. And, you know, I don't think you care about the specifics as to why, but there are a whole bunch of reasons why it made sense for us to say, let's take a patient, a resident in this case, and their family from the skilled nursing facility to home, help them understand what they should be doing over the course of the next 30 to 90 days to continue with the recovery, keep the people out of the hospital. And that was the launch point. And, you know, we've already gotten to a point where we're now starting to tie in home health because that's an important component of it. You know, you need to have people coordinated and working together. And we're in discussions which are unlikely to go anywhere anytime soon, but we're already in discussions with some of the largest players in the country that are at-risk providers who conceptually like what we're doing. But because there are so many impediments in the market to actually doing this, I don't know when those things will start to happen.
Yep. I want to translate your work into a problem that happened for me at a personal level. And again, just to add a little bit of color to this. So my, both of my parents have had very intense health issues. I've shared this with you, Stephen, many health issues. There was one circumstance a couple of years ago where my father was admitted to the hospital to have an aortic valve replacement. And his, his medical, medical data was nowhere to be found, which is not, I mean, that is a problem in itself to communicate with the doctors, right? So doctor to doctor. That is, that problem is being solved with a health information exchange. But there's not a lot of problems to be solved for the patient side. So I am one of seven children. I was able to coalesce, get everything organized, and then actually document things in what, I use OneNote. So I documented, had chapters in OneNote, everything organized, shared that with my siblings. Not really HIPAA compliant, I put a lot of stuff in there, but that's okay. I just wanted my siblings to know what was going on. It was hours and hours and hours and hours and hours of work. And it helped improve our communication, but how much better to have something, an entity, a platform that allows for the communication to be seamless and smooth, direct from the, from a licensed clinician that knows what's going on, et cetera? So it just, when I heard about what you were doing, I was so inspired because it was a very intense problem that frankly is still a problem to solve for my family. So thank you for that. I want to just go back over to Ali. Were you able to figure out?
Yes, got all the, the, if you can give me presenter mode again, permission again. I got the WebEx, there we go. All right, thank you all. Okay, so let's, let's look at what exactly T Care does. You know, we, we bring in, we're CMS Medicaid-approved, evidence-based, family caregiver support platform. But essentially, our goal and our existence is to enable aging in place in the home longer and prevent institutionalization of our elders into a facility. Nobody wants to be in ILF, ALF, or nursing home. And, and so our premise as a company is, how do we enable aging in place in the home longer? And, and help members, help elders and their family members with all the support that they need? So we represent and help different communities. Aging and dementia being 90% of the company of what we do. But we also help prevent the burnout of caregivers that are helping the intellectually development and disabled population in the Medicaid side, and then foster care, military veterans. But in Washington State, statewide, our whole premise of if you help the family caregiver, our outcomes led to, on average, 21-month-delayed nursing home placement and on average, 20% reduction in service utilization of home care and Medicaid long-term care services, which led T Care becoming legislatively mandated in Washington State. At a, at a platform level, we're a caregiver engagement through a mobile app. Then we have the backend where we have our in-house social workers doing the care management. And then we have a database that connects family members to social determinants of health resources in the local zip code. And then the data is all aggregated into this data lake that then creates preventative analytics to identify which family members are the highest risk. So that as a state, as a county, as a health plan, you distribute your resources to families that need it the most and, and, and are able to, to help the ones that are need at the most. And so that's the risk stratification. So we have a risk scoring, risk mitigation system. But ultimately, the data input that we're getting is through claims data to state-based actuarial data, to census data, to eligibility. And then we also tap into different SDOH data points that bring in the different resources. This is where Health Hive is becoming a partner for us on the distribution. But that, that's a little nerdy talk. But for, for going into actually what is it that we do? You know, what we call our data labs is specifically looking at different areas of a country and identifying specifically in health equity as there's different sensitivities and cultural adaptations. Specifically in state of Washington, we have now rollouts with a lot of native tribes on, on, on different areas. But there's, there's the case longevity aspect of you could look at the data and identify which caregivers, which family members need the most. But specifically at the individual level, not at the population level, but at the individual level, look at families broken down in different areas, the caregiver and the care receiver, broken down by race, by gender, by income levels, by employment status. And then look at different geographical-based risk. So in Washington State, we are able to look at family members that are Medicaid-eligible, that are eligible for long-term care support services, and specifically look at different levels in different areas that we are managing. So for example, in your region, we are currently managing 410 families in that area. And then look at what is the patterns and trends across the relationship base? Is the caregiver, the family member taking care of mom or versus father-in-law? What are the different resources and patterns and trends? Also based on insurance eligibility? Then we go into the clinical data on different disease categories, different chronic conditions. In, in your area, in the 410 families that T Care is managing, what patterns and trends are we seeing across the different chronic conditions? And then cross-reference that based on the health, based on the caregiver's health, based on memory and cognitive issues? And then specifically look at intention to place. And this is where our system, this is new, where we are able to look at which caregivers are what we call at-risk population out of your area? And specifically understand which families are highest risk as facility placement? Then look at selective services. So in this buzzword of social determinants of health, that these categories of services that have become, some say, hey, we need transportation. Others say we need respite. Some say we need home care, and we have workforce development challenges and issues. But we look at the data and we're like, do you really have workforce issues? That's not what the data says. You have transportation issues or facility issues. Or this is where our data is looking at what exactly in different counties and different regions is it actually leading to increase, decrease, and stabilization of that aging population? And then we are able to go down to the granular level of, for example, in this area, Catholic services in this area. Did it actually lead to that 14 families that we referred them to? Did it actually lower, maintain, or elevate the family's needs? And then this is essentially the, if you all Google "Washington" and "T Care", this is what led to T Care becoming legislatively mandated as the family caregiver support platform. And then specifically the outcomes that the state, that the state government legislators at Washington State released on how we led to, on average, 21-month-delayed nursing home placement and facility placement. And it was because of how pre-T Care and T Care, the stress and depression levels in families were reduced by connecting families at the right time, right place, to different resources.
So I have a very strong sense that we're going to, we're going to keep on digging deeper with you with T Care, possibly at a future, at a future event or future conversation. Because T Care, if, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, I know you're working with a lot of, a lot of different health plans, but right now, heavy focus is on the Medicaid population, so tip of the iceberg. For all of the other folks out there that are caregivers, see them, identify themselves as caregivers, but their loved one is not on Medicaid, or is not on an insurance plan that has that benefit, that are struggling and don't have that support. So a lot more to come, I think. And we're, I'm going to, we're going to do a quick little pivot now because I want to make sure that we have enough time before we open it up to other questions. Thank you, amazing, crazy data. And I love that you're able to slice dice and that you're building, building even more around the data. Stephen, I want to go back over to you because we found each other through Techstars. So, or we were, that was the connection. So Techstars, they have a longevity startup incubator. That's where you graduated from, graduated, your company was in it and it came out of that. Can you just take a moment to describe the focus of this incubator? It's based out of Washington DC and the innovations that are coming out of that? And any, anything else that you'd love to share? Just lessons learned, your experience on that, and any evolution of Health Hive because of it?
Sure. And typically, when you think about, you know, somebody who's doing a tech startup and incubators, you're thinking about a 25-year-old kid who is a brilliant person, has some great ideas, but doesn't really know the market. The interesting thing about the longevity program and what motivated a lot of us to apply is its Techstars, which for those who don't know, it's one of the top two business incubators in the world. But in this particular program, it's sponsored by the Melinda Gates Foundation. So it's the combination of Melinda Gates pivotal and Techstars that was really compelling. Our cohort, there were 10 companies, you know, I don't know, something like 500 companies applied, 10 companies are selected, and the average age of the founder CEOs was 51, the oldest cohort probably on the planet for any business incubator. But it's because of what you've already heard here, virtually every one of us is doing this because we saw problems and we were like, this doesn't make any sense. Let's try to figure out what to do. So the incubator itself typically is much more focused on, you know, the ABC is a path to start a business. By background, I'm a JD MBA, I was a tax M&amp;A lawyer. There's lots of stuff that I know. But what this incubator did was give me the opportunity to spend time with 100 mentors challenging the business. So, you know, lots of the people you talk to are completely wrong. They have their ideas and they say, here's where to go. And then lots of the people you talk to, you're like, my God, I was so stupid. Why wasn't I thinking about that? And that's really the value of the three-month program, is forget all of the structure. Is if you go into these programs with an open mind, you're able to just kind of challenge lots of your assumptions, step back in terms of what you're doing with the business. And hopefully, through testing your hypothesis and the network you build, you're able to get to, you know, a much better place, much faster. So when you ask, what did it do for us? You know, when you look at the business today, you can say it did virtually nothing because we're still at the beginning. On the other hand, we are now having discussions with people we never would have had discussions with. Like from a business plan perspective, I had those discussions planned. I had those discussions planned in a few years. We are, next, next week, we will hear from a couple of the largest players in the market have said they want to work with us now because, again, of intros through Techstars. So, you know, it has been great. And then you're dealing with nine other startups that are doing different things than you are. And you're all trying to figure out, part of what you're doing is just all complaining to each other about how hard healthcare is and what a mess the market is. But on the other hand, you're saying, how do we do this together? And there were, you know, there's some great companies doing great things, which, again, I'm happy to go into.
I, what I was really impressed with, with this Techstars-specific incubator is the focus on the older population, solving problems, creating businesses, creating startups in the healthcare space and outside of healthcare that is really tied to the challenges that our older patients and the older population faces. So I hope we find more, more innovators and entrepreneurs like you coming over to us to share their stories on this call, on these conversations. With that, I know that we are very close to the time that is allotted for this conversation. Looking at Cass right now, she's like having a panic attack. I'm so sorry. I would love to open it, if we can, to questions from the other commission members. And I would like to give our speakers an opportunity to have closing comments if we can pass.
Absolutely. First of all, on behalf of the commission, thank you all for sharing this extraordinary work. Let's open it up to members of the commission with any questions or clarifications.
Yeah, I have some comments, and I appreciate this very much. And I'll share a personal example, which I think is so important. My wife went through hospice care and passed away last year from cancer, metastasized breast cancer. The most difficult time that I went through in five or six weeks that she was at home hospice is trying to be a caregiver and a husband at the same time. It doesn't compute because your wife is dying and you've been trained all your life to do everything you possibly can to save her life. And at the same time, she has chosen to die and is dying, and you're trying to be a caregiver at the same time. I found it a very difficult process, and my daughter did too as well. We're Medicare and we did have a home hospice service, community home hospice and health. And we had a great caregiver and a hospice nurse. But at the same time, it was very frustrating to deal with that. And I tried to emotionally be helpful, but at the same time, you're struck with the other side of being a devoted husband. And it could be involved in your wife, if the other case as well, if that was going on. So it's so important, how do you get that message out there? And how do you deal with that? Because it's a fact of life. And especially the older you get, to face that type of situation, the more difficult it is because the age gets involved and you've got to deal and address with that, and the emotions get attached to it of how you're going to handle that at the conclusion of someone's life. I just want to share that with you because what you're doing is so important across the board, that people understand that. Because it is a complicated process, and if you're not prepared for it, it's going to make it worse. And it can really cause problems within the family as well, some conflicts back and forth. Because I can share with you, my daughter and I had some, a few disagreements about her mother and how her mother was being treated. So I just wanted to share that.
And what you experienced is exactly normal and what we call identity discrepancy. That's exactly what you were experiencing, identity discrepancy. I'm so sorry, Larry, for your loss. I know it's still very new for you and everything, but don't beat yourself up for it either. You know, it's what the caregivers all experience, and that's really what we're trying to do is to help others overcome what you're doing right now and what you've been experiencing by, you know, using some of that data to look at, how can we, you know, predict who's going to be, going through some of those very same things that you were experiencing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, for sharing that.
Amy?
Yes, Amy.
I have a question for Stephen. When you described Techstars, it sounded a little bit like Shark Tech. Do they end up giving you funding besides funding the three-month program?
They provide some capital that for us, that wasn't the impetus, right? You either, in my view, you either have to, and this is a really tough decision, you have to either decide, are you, as a small company, are you going to spend your time on capital raising? Or can you figure out how to do it, you know, on your own for a period of time so that you can start to build the business? And that's really what we wound up doing. So that is one of their core strengths and what they do. Some of us chose not to spend our time on that and to focus on the business instead. If they were going to give me just $10 million, you know, when we entered the program, I would have put focus on the capital, but it's a much smaller amount.
Thank you.
This is Franklin Johnson. First of all, thank you to all three of you for sharing your experiences and your wisdom today. This is a question for anyone who chooses to jump in. For a family that's dealing with giving care, is there or have you thought about any kind of a decision matrix to decide who would be the best one or two caregivers in a given situation?
Yeah, Franklin, the way we look at the world is, we, technology can only go so far. Technology can get you there in decision-making 80% of the way. Family dynamics, no matter how much AI or data you put at it, family dynamics becomes very unique each case by case. The way T Care looks at solving this is not necessarily deciding who's the best caregiver, but putting the right resources at the right time, right place to each caregiver that the family decides that they need to help. And bring all that toolbox of tools at the disposal of the family, regardless of what sibling or which family member is making that decision. Now, we do provide in our tools, in our toolbox, we have family counselings, sibling rivalry counselings, these, these different resources. But technology and artificial intelligence can only take you so far. They're not there to decide your family dynamics. Technology is there to help you and augment that. Then we have the human touch that at T Care, we have, we're now up to four dozen certified social workers that help counsel that family through the challenges of caregiving. But we're not there, the technology and the algorithms are not ultimately there to decide who's best fit to be a family caregiver.
And I may just add that what we're able to do is to help people understand too, if they're comfortable doing their particular role. So for instance, in my own family dynamics, you know, I knew caregiving, I had been working in the caregiving space, so everybody expected me to just to jump in there and do some things. However, there were things I was uncomfortable doing with my father that my sister was not. So what we can do from a T Care perspective is see, how is each one of our journeys unique with our dad, support that caregiver in that role, and then also help them understand that maybe this isn't something that you're, you know, that you're uncomfortable with, and transition that to maybe others in the family that would be comfortable.
If I could just quickly add, to me, one of the most important things for society to be doing, which we don't do, is start to have these discussions earlier so that families, in my particular case, my mother-in-law said she wanted to give me full legal rights, even though she had five children. She just, you know, you want to talk about the issues and make sure that it's clear to everybody why certain decisions are being made. And we, as a society, just don't do that. We wait until we're in crisis before we start to deal with these issues.
Really poignant what you just said, Stephen, and it makes me think of, you know, how we sort of, as the children, move along through life, navigating our world and referencing our parents and including them. And then it seems like, boom, all of a sudden, illness begins to hit. And then we're starting to process this. And your idea of saying that the age of CEOs was around 50, 51, thinking about it, which really sort of supports that. Do you find in all of you, in your work, that your, that your connections with, for instance, colleges and universities and others, that you find that there are more young professionals in their 20s and 30s that you're able to begin to think about and tune into this work? So it doesn't sort of hit you boom when you're 50 and your family's in crisis?
I think COVID did actually a lot to change those discussions. So, you know, I mean, I think when you start to talk to people who have never seen this and haven't experienced it, they don't take it seriously because why should they? But COVID did change the entire environment, and I think conversations are taking place now that never used to take place with younger adults. Certainly, I know with my kids, we've had these conversations, and I'm sure I wouldn't have had them otherwise.
I just wanted to thank you for your answer earlier. One of the things that my wife and I are experiencing now, we're still both relatively, in relatively good health, but in the process of setting up a trust, we had to identify who's going to be the primary financial representative, who's going to be the health representative. And so as we're working through that, it's been both frustrating but helpful to try and get some of those issues out on the table now before that immediate need develops. So while it's been challenging, it's also been helpful to kind of resolve some of those things before you have to kick your plan into action. So thank you.
Perhaps now we could move to members of the public. Guests would love to hear your thoughts and questions. For those of you who are in the room, there is no one in the room right now, so we'll move on about approaching the microphone. But for our remote participants, the staff will explain how you can reach out to us.
We actually don't have any one online today.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Well, we want to so much, we want to thank our guests.
Is that through my car? Through my car?
We are, we are actually televised, so no one may be online right now, but people absolutely hear what you've been speaking about today. And maybe we could just do a little bit of a commission download while our guests are still with us to see if there were takeaways or potential connections that arose from our work that you'd like to, that you'd like to share with us.
And Cass, if we may, I would really like to plant a seed for all of our guests, just to answer one last question. I would love to have some time on that. And this question is, what's the biggest policy barrier you have faced in successfully achieving your organization's mission? And what policy changes might, might have overcome said barrier? So because we are an influencing organization, you know, understanding the things that get in the way of success, that's my question. I'd love to have either, all, whoever to answer as we leave.
Yeah, this is a loaded question. We could have a whole day topic on this one, but the primary one I would say is, our healthcare system has been great in looking at patient or members' needs. You know, we talk about the buzzword of social determinants of health needs out in the families, but yet to this day, there has yet to be a single CPT or CMS reimbursement code for family caregiver support.
And I'd just add the additional red tape that goes along with trying to get something like that completed, whether it's in the healthcare industry, your grants, you know, state-funded programs, whatever. They need to loosen up a little bit more to help identify what those needs are on that community level and start pushing forward for the support of those caregivers. You know, we have CARES Act out there where they're identifying these caregivers coming into the hospitals, but they're not doing anything beyond that on the backend of it once those caregivers leave with their loved ones.
I actually would have said the same thing, which is some sort of payment mechanisms for family caregiving.
I'd love to offer then a glimmer of hope because as a physician and as a part of an organization that is trying to transform healthcare, so outside of my role as a commission member, there are, there are value-based care approaches Medicare has been taking. One is brand new, who knows if it's going to work, but one of them is a, it's a build off of direct contracting, but it's called ACO Reach. And to both of your desire to have SDOH recognized and reimbursed, there's actually a call-out in ACO Reach that helps identify and give clinics and doctors advanced payment based on the risk, the social risk for the patients that they're caring for. And it can be upwards of $30 per patient per month. So it is, and it's for those doctors and those clinics to really improve the care. Again, I have no idea if this is going to work. It's still in experimentation mode, but what we learn from that will likely be applied to the Medicare Shared Savings Plan and those ACOs, accountable care organizations that are in place. So that's a little, a little something to think about.
Right. And the other thing I would love, which every, will never happen, and I just don't understand why, is just a universal healthcare number for an individual. So many of the problems we have won't be solved by that, but organizationally, the structure around a single number and identifier would help to alleviate a lot of the technical and processing issues that just cause so much aggravation and so much, take so much time for so many people.
I think we just need to pull the heat out of that framing out. And I think we would all agree. The political heat is what I'm referring to, but you know, I think we would all agree on everyone should have, have healthcare coverage. Okay, thank you so much. So any other, last comments, Cass, and other takeaways?
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you so much. Joyce, any recent hands? Anyone would like to give a little takeaway before we go and thank our guests? Well, thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon, sharing your expertise. This is so, so many things for us to think about, certainly. And, and, you know, particularly as we are all thinking about the Commission on Aging and how we can play a role in supporting our, you know, our community here, this is really important for us to have sort of in the front of our mind, to know that this important work is going on. And I will say right now that now is your opportunity, that if you would like to choose to exit, this would be a time to do that. If you'd like to stick around for the rest of the meeting, you are absolutely welcome to. And if you choose to leave us right now, know that, that we thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you. I enjoyed it. Have a good evening.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Tanya, for that tremendous, tremendous chat. Really appreciate it. So it would be a public comment time? Am I right to say right now, Susan, that that would not be, that would be something that we would possibly skip through? Or, okay, I'm getting, I'm getting the heads up on that. So, so our next portion on our agenda is the communications and announcements. Are there any announcements for the good of the order?
I have just one announcement, and I passed it out to Cass, to you, and well, it's Franklin. I just want to plug Meals on Wheels for some of the things they're doing. They're contracted with an organization that comes in and teaches seniors computer skills. They're doing it at Blue Key Center, and they've got a program coming up November the 7th, November the 14th, Monday and Wednesday, not long, an hour and 15 minutes. And that includes a meal at, at Blue Key Center, but they teach folks how to use the Chrome, Chromebook for emails, web research, and more to stay in. to stay in touch. And it's so valuable. I've learned that with the center I'm in right now, that how many of those seniors do not know how to use a computer? I'm really shocked to a certain degree. And so they lose that communications with their kids and their grandkids and so forth, who, you know, thrive on that. But this is a great thing and Meals on Wheels has picked it up. It comes from, their, one of their staff members has put this together and they're going to do it more than just one occasion. And they furnish the Chromebooks. They bring the Chromebooks as well and pass them out. So the seniors that have signed up for the, for that particular program can learn these skills, which as I said, will help them with communications and closeness to their families. Because many of them have families scattered throughout the country. In Chromebook, you can interface with your family members. So just want to share that.
Remarkable. Now everyone doesn't have to go to their grandchildren and get some eye rolls. Can you help me use my computer?
If you want to know about computers, just go to your grandkids. Eleven or 12, they'll help you.
Wonderful. Do we have any other announcements that anyone would like to share?
This is Chuck. This is Chuck. This is an opportunity. As a member, as a member of the program, I have the responsibility for ranking for speaker of the December. And that is Taylor, Taylor Winston. And he's with Tenny Creek Assisted Living in Diesel Dell, a new facility. I wanted to meet with him and get into the December Rotary meeting. I asked if I could bring the couple of guests. And since they do look at vulnerable populations, I guess affordable housing, fixed incomes and disabilities, they do have the program that supports older adults in that housing conflict. So I was going to offer anybody to join me in the next week when I set up a tour, if it would let me know, work with your schedule. That sets something up. So that's opportunity. The second is my trade organization is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And in 2020, the national meeting that was supposed to be in Portland, they pushed that back to 2021. And 2021, one more, they confirmed they decided to go virtual. And they gave Portland and Motherland a chance for 2023. This is transportation professionals around the world who are talking transportation. But what I'd like to do is there's abstracts to present a topic due in November. And I was going to see if there might be interest in doing something with the Aging Readiness Plan in transportation. Because we're kind of unique in the sense we're updating an aging readiness plan. It doesn't happen every day. And I think it's very interesting what we've been talking about and looking at might be interesting to be shared with this group next time. So I just wanted to put that out there and see if anybody would like to email me and talk with me about some ideas for an abstract due in November. So I think right before the next close meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chuck. Maybe Susan and Jenna, can we send those, those, you know, Chuck's thoughts out to others so that people can respond to that if we don't get a response right away? For both of Chuck's, both of Chuck's conversations. Thank you so much, Chuck.
Yes, you can do that.
I wish, I think, Jenna, you have something? Okay. I just have a public service announcement because it affects a lot of the seniors. Veterans Day Parade is November the 5th. It's not on the 11th, which is when Veterans Day. We do it a Saturday prior. It's at the Reserve Vancouver Barracks. I looked at the list. I worked on, I work on the committee. There's over 85 units already signed up for it. This is the first time in three years that we're having the parade because of COVID. Right now, I just look at the list and you can see the interest. We have seven high school bands signed up. The most high school bands we've ever had signed up for, for parade. A lot of veterans show up. There will be some war, two veterans in the parade in Korean War because there's that generation that's sort of fading away. And it's an opportunity to come down. It's not a military parade. It's a community parade. It's a rite of passage for every Boy Scout and Girl Scout to march in that parade. So it's a fun thing and hopefully the weather will be great. But as I said, we'll probably end up having 100 units go through it. So it starts at 11 o'clock. That's on November the 5th, which is a Saturday. And following that, there's an open house over at the Artillery Barracks. And the open house at the Artillery Barracks is set up where you can, we're going to have free food, probably hot dogs will be given out. And it'll be tables set up to honor those veterans that are still serving in the community that have gotten out and maybe are driving a bus for C-Trans or police officer and so forth to make sure we honor those veterans that are still serving their country and community. So that's it.
Very exciting. And Larry, where does the parade begin again? You mentioned which park?
Yeah, it starts, well, it forms up at Crosley Lanes, but it goes down Evergreen Boulevard. The reviewing stand and all the dignitaries are located in front of the Marshall House. So it goes down the Evergreen and then down Fort, Fort Vancouver Way, where the Oahu Howard is, down to the Fifth Street, down by the fort. And it terminates down there. So.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. How wonderful. Any other comments or any other announcements? Yes, Chuck, do you have your hand up for more or is that for the other?
Oh, I just was getting, I just put my hand down. No, I didn't have anything else.
Thank you. I know those pesky hands that pop up. Well, I will say that our, our next regular meeting will take place on November 16th. That will be our final Innovation Through Connection themed fireside chat. We'll be speaking with two guests focused on a topic that was near and dear to today's discussion, caregivers. We will also be presenting this year's Silver Citizen Award and finalizing our annual findings and recommendations while November is going to be busy. And we look forward to seeing everyone there. So with no other agenda items to discuss, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion to adjourn has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please unmute and say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? No. Well, with that, this wonderful meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much and we will see you in November.
Thank you. Bye.